Hearing none, item three. Present and discuss the 2017-2018 City of Enid Authority's budget. Aaron?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
We need to be finished by 6:15.
Okay, I think we can do that.
No pressure.
Tonight, we're going to go over an overview, and as we finish up the overview of the entire budget, we're going to get into specifics of general fund and health fund tonight before we move on. Again, this is the requirements on the budget. There's 30 days before we have to present to the governing body. 15 days prior to the end of the year, we have to have a budget hearing. We must advertise for that budget hearing and have approval seven days before. Historically, the city has always pushed that out about 30-plus days. To adopt by resolution, that takes an extra 30 days. Also allows our staffing time to finish out the current year that we're in and do everything that we need to, to make sure we're within budget for the current year as well. So these are the dates that all of those fell for us this year. Friday, April 21st, we sent out the draft to the Mayor and Commissioners, and tonight we're having the overview. There's also a meeting tomorrow at 11:00. There's a meeting Thursday night at 5:00, where we're going to have the hearing and discuss the CIP and ERDA, and then we're going to finish up with the remaining funds the following Tuesday, May the 9th, and bring back, hopefully for approval on May 16th, to you the final budget for 2017-18. It's kind of dark. This is the budget summary. This is on page 10 of your budget document. Overall, the total revenues come up to $144 million, and the expenses are $146 million. Looking at it in terms of this, this is how we're required to do the budget document with all transfers in and out included, so that can be kind of confusing. You'll see, last year, our numbers for the budget revenue and budget expenditures were about $126 million, so we have increases of about $17 million in revenue and about $20 million in expenditures. Well, it's kind of duplicating some things because of the transfers in and out with sales tax, and that's largely revolved around the Cal Lake sales tax. And so we have revenue coming in to general fund for the Cal Lake program, and expenditure going out as a transfer, and then it gets moved over to EMA, and EMA does the program for that. And so there's a lot of moving around of the dedicated funds to the areas that they need to be in. And so on the next few slides, I go ahead and remove all those transfers out to kind of talk about what it looks like without all of those transfers moving in and out of funds. Yes, Mayor?
Go ahead.
I was going to say, just for general information, that doesn't automatically mean that we're not operating within our budget, correct?
Correct, we are staying within it.
Right, well, I know, but I mean, people see that, and they freak out, and then the first thing you know, tomorrow, there's going to be 97 comments on the newspaper about we're not, "Oh, my God, there are $3 million over." So I just want to make that very clear, that that's not what that means.
We will get into the breakdown of why that's showing a deficit budget. There's some very specific reasons that cause that, and we'll get into each fund and what's causing that.
I know we will, but we know that, but I just want to make that clear.
Tonight, we're going to go over that.
That people understand that that's not what that means.
Yes.
Explain the projected fund balances again.
Okay. Projected fund balances differ depending on what type of fund they are classified as under GASP, which is the Government Accounting Standards Board. Governmental funds are not allowed to recognize their assets, and so their fund balance in governmental funds is cash. Basically, there may be a few receivables or other things that affect that at the end of the year, but funds like the airport, $22 million, that's not all cash. That is also their assets because they're an enterprise fund. So there are different things that make up those, depending on what kind of fund classification they are.
That is really confusing.
That's what we're required to do.
Like it or not, I think it's very confusing. Well, when you look at EMA at $80 million, and the Enid Event Center and Convention Hall at $32 million, most of that has to be...
Assets.
Noncash.
The majority of it is noncash.
Which, the only way you can convert it to cash is to sell it.
Right, and most of our infrastructure, that would not...
Or liquidate it.
Yes. Yeah, and so the ones that are extremely high are because they are enterprise-type funds. They can recognize their assets, and that is the majority of what that fund balance is made up of.
Is there any way to let us know how much cash is in one of those funds as opposed to...
That is in the audit that we do every year, and so if you look at your audit document, it shows by fund of cash and investment in each of those funds.
I'll go back and look at it.
All right.
Great.
So as we went through the budget process this year, we started in February. We went through everything internally within the accounting department and looked at things across the city that needed to be looked at. There were also meetings with each department head and admin staff to allow them for input into the current year budget, and then we also had direction from the city manager. And based on input from the city manager, there were a couple of big items that he wanted to focus on in this budget, and you'll see as we go through how those are implemented into this budget document. There's $11.7 million in the capital improvement program this year. That's an increase of $2.1 million. Of that, 11.7, 4.4 is for street improvements. Local street program by itself increased from 285 to 1.5 million, so five times the funding there. And also, a big piece of that is Cal Lake. We have $6.7 million dedicated from the 3/4 cent sales tax for Cal Lake. There's also, the last month in June of 2018, that quarter of a cent rolls off and is repurposed from the schools to the Cal Lake program as well. That's reflected in here.
My Dave, is that it?
That sales tax repurposes is March of '18, which will be the funds that we receive in May, I guess, yes, 2018. We also carved out a $1 million amount from the utility rate increases. During this process also, we had multiple meetings with our financial advisors and bond counsel regarding what would be adequate amounts and what they were projecting for the Cal program to be coming from those increased rates that are set to go every January through 2019. That amounted to $1 million this year that needed to be set aside, and you'll see that that is carved out to help us fund future debt payments related to Cal as we move forward with that program. The other big focus area for the city manager was public safety support. Both the police and fire departments are receiving the largest transfer that they've ever received from the city in this year's budget. This is taking that budget summary on page 10 and removing all those transfers. So this is just straight looking at revenues in all these categories without the transfers included. So look at it in those terms. We have $90 million of revenue, and those amounts going out. Personnel services is 32 million or 35% of that budget. Operations accounts for 31%. Capital outlay at 14.6 million is 16%, and debt service is 17 million or 18% of that. And then, how can we fund that deficit budget there? Go through each of the funds that are making up that surplus deficit. The first fund there, Special Projects Fund, is a fund that's used by the police department. They take in monies for federal and state seizures or donations or other such that they may get. The timing of them is really highly sensitive and unknown, and so we made budget higher. They're not going to expend anything they don't have. The fund balance that is showing for them on their fund is a cash balance, so they do have a balance of $252,000 that they can draw down for that $143. They still will have a surplus in that fund. Airport fund did have a slight surplus. They were the only fund that showed a surplus in the budget. We do anticipate that as funding and grants come forward for the airport, that we may have some appropriations throughout the year, but that's unknown. It depends on timing of grant funding that's available for future projects such as a cross-runway or doing a terminal remodel out there, which have been some projects that have been kind of in the line to come up next for the airport. Dance Development Authority, they do also have a cash balance. It's around $40,000. They have just not spent all of the monies that's been sent over there every year. A lot of that has to do with scholarship funding and maybe just not all of that being used down, and so slowly use that fund balance down. Stormwater fund, $827,830. There are two major projects that are designed, ready to go. We are going to construct them this year. That is a huge increase in stormwater funds that we're going to be spending this year. They have over $2 million fund balance, and so they're still going to be over $1 million after we spend down this amount of money. Capital Project Escrow Fund is another fund that kind of saves up money. It is developer fees that are paid into stormwater based on basins that they're in, and whatever stormwater actually constructs projects in those basins, this fund reimbursed for their part of the project for those funds. There's a cash balance in that fund as well. Police, Fire, and 911 all have a positive fund balance. Again, $216,000 projected fund balance at the end of the year for 911, 2.76 for Police, and $543,000 for Fire, so they all have sufficient funds to cover these deficit budgets that we are presenting to you for this year's budget.
Do they pull that money out?
Excuse me?
Will they have to pull that money out to balance their budget?
That's what it's there for, yeah.
Or they may not spend it?
Yeah, and they may not. Some of them have larger deficits this year. Police, I think, even had a deficit budget this year of 1.7. They're going to come in well under that, so even though this may be what we project, they may not spend that. This is comparing the budget summary again without transfers this year to last year. And see, increased revenues of 5.4 million. Again, that's largely attributed to the Cal Lake sales tax. We'll get further down into the details of each of these on the next few slides. Personnel went down, 894,000. That's largely attributed to the fact that we had 27 payrolls in the current fiscal year we're in. Next year, we can go back to 26. We pay biweekly, so every 10 to 11 years, we have an extra payroll that we have to account for based on that payroll cycle.
I have a question before we get off on the top line.
Yes.
Okay, the revenue increase, the variance of 5.4 million is attributable to the Cal sales tax. I think I'm reading it right, that the budget for the Cal sales tax 3/4 cent is budget projected 6.7 million this year? So are we assuming a decrease in sales tax overall?
No. The amount that's budgeted for sales tax overall is flat to last year with the only increase being called. There are some other factors in that that are causing it on my next slide, so we'll get there.
Okay, and then, so we are assuming that there is going to be, that any decrease generally will be made up by the increase in Internet sales tax?
Correct.
Is that the assumption?
Yes.
Do we have any preliminary estimates from the state on the Internet sales tax collection?
No, and I have inquired to...
So we may be pleasantly surprised.
...some other municipalities to see if they have some, yeah.
Thank you.
Come on, George, optimism.
Anything is good.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Operations, decrease of 1.9, and again, we'll get there. That's made up of a couple of things where revenue was higher related to grants or with the event center where revenues came in lower, so expenses also came in lower. And we'll get to that. Capital outlay, increase of 2.9. 2.1 of that is the CIP program with the focus of where the city manager didn't want additional funds there. And then debt services, you'll see a huge increase, $8 million, and that is all related to the Cal program. So again, there's our deficit versus our surplus from last year. This breaks down the revenue, that $5.4 million number that we just talked about. And you'll see, general fund increases 6.55. That is Cal Lake sales tax. There are some decreases also airport fund. That decrease of slightly under half a million is related to grant funding, and so the revenue is decreased, but the expenditure on the other side, you'll see, is decreased also whenever we get over to the operations. Enid Municipal Authority, there's an increase of 2.9 million, 2.96. There are a few things that make that up. The large portion of it is water sales. We've continued to come in higher than what we projected in our budget, and again, these numbers have been reviewed with our financial advisor, and we're in agreement that that will be realized numbers. We're finishing higher than that already this year, so...
Are we still sending quite a bit of water to Coke?
Varies from day to day. As they're working out their, whatever they have going on, so...
How much of the general fund is sales tax revenue?
Majority of it.
$30 million, is it $30 million?
35 million. 35 million of the 40.
Which is almost $3 million a month.
Yes.
I thought it was closer to 30 million.
Well, 6.5 million, 6.6 million of it is Cal.
Cal, okay.
Yeah.
So that gets you back to 34.
Yeah. You'll see. When we get down to general fund, there's ones that break out. That 6.5 number down further.
Okay.
So you can see what that is. Enid Economic Development Authority, that number is a decrease, and it's related to the TIF funds that are tied to the 66th Street project for TP and L. Capital Improvement, that $1 million is also tied to the TP and L. That's ODOT funding. That will not be recreated again. Central National Bank Center, this is the 1.8. There were some revenues that we didn't hit, but we also lowered the expenditures almost the exact same amount, and so those offset. And then all remaining funds, when you look at all the rest of the 23 funds that aren't listed up here, it's $78,000 difference in revenue increase. When we look at personnel comparison over prior years, and see, overall this year, we're up four positions from the previous year, but when we drill down into that some more, there's a decrease of seven full-time positions and an increase of 11 part-time and seasonal positions, thus largely due to the restructuring out of Meadow Lake Golf Course. We're trending down, you can see, overall in full-time, which will impact some of the personnel and health numbers that you see a little later on. Operations comparison, again, this is those expenditures I was talking about. Airport fund is offset here. This is the expense that goes with those revenues, and Central National Bank Center, here's the expense that goes with the revenues on that part of it, and the rest of the remaining funds are only 280,000 more for a total decrease in operations of 1.9. Capital outlay, as we move on, you can see some of the increase here, that $2.9 million we were talking about. Street and Alley Fund, there's an increase of 1.2 million. That's for local street program. Capital Improvement Program went down 3.4. That's largely tied to the 66th Street project that was $2.5 million, and also about $1 million worth of geo-bond funding that was available this year, but has now been expended in, so all of those bridge funds are now depleted and have been used within the community. Street Improvement was not funded last year, and we did get $1.43 million in there for that this year. Santeris here is about the same. There are some regular maintenance things and a couple of upgrades at the water treatment facility that will be discussed. Stormwater, this is that big increase we're talking about. We have a couple of projects that were designed, now we're ready to build, which is why that big increase there of $2.1 million. Water capital, again, we have some wells that are ready to go. We just need to get them online. There's about three that need to come online, and then we have money in there for some additional wells that need to happen and some additional maintenance and expansion of pilot programs that were tried this year and that have been successful. And then all the remaining funds, 779,000. It's largely equipment throughout the city. Increases in equipment. Debt services, the other component of that, you can see, there's only two funds that have debt associated with them. EMA, again, there are nine notes other than Cal Lake, and they're about the same. They're within $1,500 of what they were last year, but that big increase there is Cal Lake debt and future reserves for Cal Lake debt. And then Enid Economic Development Authority, $344,000 increase is due largely to a note that we took out that was interest-only for the first 12 months and started having to pay back principal in February of this year related to the academy incentive, and so this year, we have the entire amount with principal payment as well. And we're going to go specifically more into general fund and health fund. Those are the two we're going to go a little bit tonight. So when we look at general fund revenues, I just want to talk a minute about where we are this year. This is the current year budget that we're in, sales tax, where we budgeted, and then where our projections are coming in, and then the variance that's over here on the left. Sales tax are coming in high. When we originally approved this budget, we did not have the passage yet of the Cal sales tax that was elected in August, and so as we work through the last couple of months here, we will be bringing appropriation back to you to appropriate those funds for sales tax so that we can move them over to the municipal authority so that they get segregated where they need to be. Franchise fees, again, we've been several years now on a downward trend, and you'll see, this is coming in under, and we did make an adjustment for that in the projection for this next year. Police traffic fines continue to be up. We did make an adjustment for that one as well. Most of the others are not too far off miscellaneous. Well, we're $46,000 under this year. Last year, we came in at $128,000. It's very volatile, and so until there's like a trend that requires us to move that down, we won't. When we looked at the five-year average on that, it was still $85,000, so I think we're still very conservative in where we projected that to come in this next year.
Was the total revenue about three slides for the $34 million that I thought was sales tax? I've always thought our sales tax was right at $30 million.
Right, so this is our sales tax 28 for this year that we're in. Now, whenever I move to this next slide, this is going to be what's in the budget that we're talking about right now, and just have this to show you some of the trends on why we move some of the numbers, where we move them for the next year's budget. So in this one, you can see that the sales tax went up to 35, and that is to include the increase here for Cal sales tax. Franchise fees, you can see, again, we moved it down 227. That's based on the fact that in this current year, we're not hitting, and we haven't for the last couple of years hit what we have in there for revenues on franchise fees. Police fines and some of these others, we did increase. We increased miscellaneous here based on the fact that we're going to be getting some rent money on property that we acquired this year, and small increase in grants. When we look at the expenditures in general fund, again, this is year-over-year, so current year that we're in, and then proposed budget. So personnel went down 496,000. Again, that's largely attributed to that 26, 27 payroll, and then there were also some decreases in full-time staffing in general fund. Operations overall went up $1,300, and this is a lot of where you see department heads deciding where they need to spend their funding. They may have a need to upgrade some software this year, but next year, they may need a new computer. That's where a lot of their input comes in, to move those monies around within their operational budget. Capital outlay, increase $8 million. We'll get into that. There are three major components that make up that capital outlay, and that is transfers out to other funds, sales tax transfers, and then capital for the general fund. So we have operational departments totaling $494,790 decrease, and then whenever we break out that $8 million on the previous slide of capital outlay into those categories, the general fund transfers out, you can see, we have an increase in transfers out to other funds. We have an increase in the sales tax, and we have an increase in capital equipment that we've provided for general fund this year. Go now through, I know this is a very busy slide, I apologize. This is by department, their proposed budget for next year, and their current year's budget, and then the variance, and so if you desire, we can go through every one of these budgets. If not, I can address specific questions on them, but overall, it's that $494,000 increase. There's only three departments that do have an increase, and that is administration, general government, and public works management. Other than that, every other department has a decrease within their operational budget for this year.
Can you just identify the two, really, the two six-figure decreases?
Yes, absolutely.
How that comes, is that...
So records and receipts, there's two things that got moved out of general fund, and they got actually moved into EMA. There are some credit card fees that were associated with utility bills that were being paid for out of general government that are really, needed to be reallocated to the Enid Municipal Authority. So whenever we get over there, you'll see that, and also express bill pay, which is the online software that goes along with those payments, as well was being paid from this and was reallocated to the municipal authority. So those are the changes in records and receipts. Parks and recreation was personnel changes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else specific to these departmental budgets that you would like to go over?
And then, one more, the PR and ETN. It looks like there's one fewer regular position, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, yes. We had a position that vacancy created, and we believe that we don't need to fill it at this time, so we did not budget for it.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the... Well, maybe, can you move to the next slide? This is general fund transfers out. These are mostly for operations, and so you can see, the police transfer is projecting an increase of $645,000. We have an increase for Fire of $545,000, and then we have a slight decrease in golf and transit as they are working to become more self-sufficient there. BDA and Juvenile Services set amount. It's been the set amount for multiple, multiple years. BDA goes to help support Mike Cooper's contract and some scholarship funds over there, and the Juvenile Services goes to help offset for juvenile. We used to have a position in general government that helped with juveniles for the court system, and police took that over, and so there's funding there that goes over to help offset those costs for them.
Did you explain the variance in the police and fire department accounts?
Yes. Police and Fire, as you saw, last year, they had a deficit of 1.7 for Police, and this year, one of the objectives of the city manager was to get more money over to Police and Fire to help offset that, and so there is an increase this year. The budget that's presented for Police this year is a $1.1 million deficit as a result of this increased transfer to them. Eventually, they won't have that fund balance to draw from, so we're incrementally getting to a place where we're able to fund where we need to fund there, based on direction from the city manager. And the last one, EEDA, that is based on contractual agreements that are in place as far as sales tax incentives that the Economic Development Authority has agreed to, and so that's what those amounted to. So it was an overall increase out of general fund to these other funds of 1.1 million. So we look at sales tax transfers. Again, you can see, there's no increase from '17 to '18. One thing I do need to point out here, and will be a change in your final, the school sales tax was put in there for all 12 months instead of ending in March of '18, so that adjustment will be made. The amount was already included in Cal, so it's duplicated there, and that will be removed and adjusted accordingly in the final draft. And then, equipment funding. The funding requests that we receive every very tremendously. You can see kind of what was budgeted this year versus last year, and some of this increases. We worked very hard to get some specific equipment for the Street and Stormwater Department as part of focus on streets that the city manager had. You can see, we have a street sweeper, dump truck, and a skid loader, all to help with those street and curb appeal type things. There were, the street sweeper that we currently have is a 2002 model, so it'll be a replacement. The dump truck, the same thing, it's a 1997 model, and the skid loader is a 2007 model. We'll use that, move that... It's a 1997 model, and the skid loader is a 2007 model, and we'll use that, move the older one over to a different area to use so that they have the newer one there.
We've only got one street sweeper?
At the time, we only had one right now. Our other one is inflexible.
So we're going to buy another one?
Yes.
Are we going to keep the other one in service or just use the new one?
Yes, we'll have, we'll have two then. We'll have this new one that you'll purchase, and then the other.
And they operate primarily downtown?
Uh, no, they're actually all...
Get out in the neighborhood?
You know, we try to, you know, do as many areas as we can do. But we'll have two running full-time now. But they're both very old, the two that we do have, and one is not fixable at this time.
See, IT Equipment is, we're running out of service, upgrade to email servers that we have to do. Same thing with the traffic equipment, it's conflict monitor stuff, and it's out of warranty or out of commission. They won't service it any longer, so we have to upgrade it. Fleet Equipment, there are three different pieces of equipment that have to do with tire alignment and tire balance and rotation type things that need to be replaced. And there's four vehicles, three trucks, three trucks, excuse me, that need to be replaced. They all are ninety, early nineties models and have 130,000 to 178,000 miles on them, so I think it would be prudent for us to replace those.
Orders of Police and Fire Department vehicles.
When we get to their budgets?
Yes.
We'll talk about them.
Is there anything on there?
No, this is just for General Fund. So they have their own funds, and theirs will be included there. And then we have Health Fund. Health Fund is an internal service fund, and what that means is there's expenditures to all the funds that have employees, they pay it into this fund, this fund holds the money. And from year to year, that is looked at to analyze what we're providing as a service to our employees. You heard last meeting, April, last meeting in April from our health consultants, as far as what we're doing with the plan there. You can see that it reflects, here is this year's budget that we're currently in, we can show a balanced budget. You can see our actual experience is revenue coming in higher and our expenditures coming in quite lower. They did say that we are having a good claims year. They don't always go that way, sometimes they can be the exact opposite. So we continue to be prudent in how we budget for those and allow for that fund balance to be there when we experience a bad claims year. And so that's some of what you'll see there. When we look at the revenues for the Health Fund, you'll see an overall decrease of about forty-three thousand dollars. A lot of that is attributable to the fact that we have the 26 payrolls instead of 27, so less money is going over there, and we have the fewer full-time positions. And so that is feeding into some of these numbers as well. The employee contribution number you can see here in the middle is coming in a little bit higher in the red there than where we budgeted. We did make a slight increase based on that, but a lot of that is driven by turnover or other things that may affect that. So we make sure and be conservative and make sure that we have enough money in the Health Fund to pay for the claims that are experienced there. And then when we look at the expenditures in the Health Fund, the large majority of is claims. And again, you can see this is the same thing where we budgeted, it's coming in lower, but we did make a slight decrease to next year's. The health fees are also the same way, and all the rest of these are minimal and stay about the same from year to year. If there's any specific questions on Health Fund or General Fund or anything that we've gone over, I'm glad to answer those.
Are we making more effort to get that sidewalk machine sold for a more reasonable price?
You know, one of the challenges we had with the sidewalk machine is trying to find and get a good price for it. And so we need to go back probably and talk to some contractors that might be interested in that. But I'm not sure on the auction site, we'll get the best.
Well, but isn't like we discussed potentially marketing it directly in the Dallas-Fort Worth market?
Yes, and I don't know that we've made...
It's a big enough piece of equipment that it's worth trucking it if the price is right. Okay. Well, with all the equipment we're buying, that was a rather expensive piece, and we could buy another...
Right.
We could replace it with something more useful.
I have a feeling too, that the older it gets, the less it's going to be worth.
Yeah. So I'd like to see that parted with if we're not going to use it, maybe offset some of the other stuff we are buying.
Good point.
Okay?
Good point.
Well, but the cost to use it was higher than the cost of farming it out.
We went through this pretty quickly, and I know we have a couple of new commissioners. Aaron's gone through quite a bit of detail, and it's probably, it can be very confusing. So we'd like to use the rest of the time, this is the only thing on the study session, to try and answer questions about the General Fund or Health Fund.
I do have, I do have one question on this. Are dental claims that low? I'm surprised the dental claims are so low.
Yes.
All right.
The benefits are a little lower coverage there than on the Health Plan, and so the claims are therefore lower, the amount that's covered.
Must have a lot of good teeth missing.
They max out on their benefits.
You want to go back to the budget calendar slide at the beginning? We proposed all those meetings, I think, in the study session even before this one. If, we think we can do a good job covering the budget, but we also want to be aware that if there are specific questions or need for another special meeting, we can certainly do that probably next week. So Aaron had talked about, we plan to cover specific things on the second and the fourth. Did you already mention that? On the fourth is capital improvement projects.
And EEDA.
EEDA.
Yes.
Tomorrow is delving into EMA.
Tomorrow, we're going to get into, let's see, on this slide. So we're going to do the ones that are in yellow, it doesn't really look yellow out there, but golf, EMA, VDA, CDVG sinking fund, and EPTA tomorrow.
And then do we have...
One thing on that slide right there, if I may, on the Central National Bank, we projected their revenue to be significantly lower this coming fiscal year, or the fiscal year that we're budgeting for. And why is that?
Historically, it hasn't been as high as what we've budgeted this year. We take a lot of that data and input from the management at Spectra, and whenever we went over things this year and just how things were coming in with revenues being, projecting coming in 1.8 million dollars less and expenditures coming in 1.7 million dollars less, we felt it was prudent, and they did agree that these are the numbers that they wanted presented as revenue.
Or, I'm assuming that they're making money on most of their programs that they bring in.
I can speak to some of that. As you know, overall, we're not breaking even, that's why we have a deficit. But on each event, we look at, we look at profit-loss scenarios, and really on every type of event, we plan to make a profit. Sometimes we're wrong, and we, I rely on the expertise of the Spectra Group and support them on pretty much every event. I was over there today talking with Kevin, and he was talking about a corporate event that they just had, we made $10,000 on. So those are the kind of things I like to hear. Sometimes on events, I can think of some concerts in the past that we probably didn't break even on, but we went into it thinking we would make money. Based on the last meeting that we had, you know, we did the supplemental appropriation, Kevin and I talked long and hard, and I know I heard you guys, we want to be realistic with this budget, that we can, and conservative, and so that we're going to be able to hit these revenue numbers and stay within these expenditures because I don't want to have to come back before you and ask for a change. So we're committed to that.
The only reason I raised the issue is that, you know, I think we sort of assumed, farther we went down the road with this organization, that the more the revenue, we'd see revenue increases each year rather than a decline.
Well, we have seen, well, the decline is what Aaron was explaining, is we were overly optimistic or we estimated too high. I don't think we probably ever hit that. So we're trying to be optimistic, but you remember the slide that Kevin showed, and we can bring it at one of these meetings coming up, when we talk more about the CMB Center, is even, even with what we're talking about, we've still done as well as we've ever done with the center down there, with about a 570,000 dollar deficit or difference between overall revenues and expenditures for them to run the center. We're pretty confident that with the hotel, that we will improve upon that. A goal would be to try to get to break even at some point, but what is not measured in these numbers, this is just direct money spent, direct money received. What's not measured is additional sales tax that may be generated in the community when the hotel gets here, even without the hotel now, people that may come in and stay in hotels related to events down there, that money's not captured. The quality of life factor.
Do I have any guess, no matter what that figure would be?
I don't. One of the things that we, Kevin and I have talked about is looking at trying to work on a study, to come up with some numbers, kind of like we do for a medical space, when we say that's a 250 million dollar impact to the community. We have not completed that.
There was, there was a guy that came a few years ago that Marcy had, Marcy was involved with, and his name was Berkeley something.
Berkeley Young.
Yeah, and he did a study and talked about the formula that they use to figure how much events, how much gets brought into a community per event. He had a pretty good formula. I mean, it's been several years, but I would imagine that formula is about the same. But Marcy may have that. Because it was a pretty good, it was a significant amount of money that gets brought into the community for each event that gets put on, especially if they spend the night and they eat dinner and all those things. He has a formula to calculate all that. So we can actually put a kind of a number to it. Well, it's been probably four or five years, it's probably been five years ago, maybe.
I think we'd be surprised how much less our sales tax revenue is without the people staying here, purchasing gas, using our restaurants. I think our 30 million dollar figure would be much less.
I was gonna say, like Gerald was saying, we have, even though we're still having to contribute some to that fund, we, we've contributed less every year. And I think we also need to make it real clear, it's only been open four years, and we never, ever, 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 those of us that voted on that, ever thought that in four years it would break even. And that's a place that people like to be real critical of every single time we talk about it. We never, ever thought in four years it would be completely running itself. We, we've known from the beginning, we were going to have to help it along for a while.
And I'll be interested to see, I assume when we talk about that, Kevin will be here.
Yes, I think we're talking, what day are we talking about this? Night, okay.
I'll be interested to see, he generally gives us some, some really great numbers on how many people are coming from out of town, and that's all, you know, that's all sales tax we would have had. That's, that's the kind of great data I'd like to see a little more of.
It would be nice to see what our mix, what we think our mix is with the Central National Bank Center, sales tax-wise. We rely on sales tax to take care of a lot of things in this city. It's been fantastic that we've even held a level dollar amount when you look what has happened in the state of Oklahoma. Enid is in as good a shape as anybody in the state of Oklahoma, and the mix is great as to what creates its sales tax.
Am I correct that the agendas will be posted in such a way that if there, we want to go back to something later, we can pick it up at a subsequent meeting?
Yes, we've already posted the one for tomorrow, but it offers the opportunity for you to discuss and take action on anything, I believe, in City of Enid and whatever authorities we're talking about.
Just occasionally, I'll be dredging through it. Oh yeah, I should have asked about that.
We'll always come back, I'm pretty sure we always come back to City of Enid at the end.
Okay.
So that'd be another opportunity at each meeting. We've not posted the Thursday meeting yet, but we'll be working diligently to get that posted tomorrow.
I just hope we can make sure that we can pick stuff up.
Absolutely. We started after the study session, which as you know, is just discussion. But the rest of the meetings will be regular meetings that you can discuss and take action as you feel appropriate, to make whatever changes you think are appropriate, to make this the best budget for, an appropriate budget, to set your priorities going forward.
We can make motions there, but we can't here. Anything, anything else?
A lot to get through.
Do we have, let's see, the three more special meetings and the regular meeting, and if that's not enough, we'll certainly might have another one.
To make sure we have.
Please, no.
Hearing none, where Jern will meet upstairs at 6:30.
Thank you for joining us for the Enid City Commission Study Session. If you have any questions or comments, visit our website at enid.org.